We'll move on to conduct of business.
Item 6A, adopt resolution approving the parcel map and final map and authorizing the city manager to execute improvement agreements, maintenance agreements, stormwater treatment measure maintenance agreements, agreements for dedication of real property for park and recreational uses, and affordable housing agreement for the Skyline residential projects at 3300 College Drive.
Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Sullivan. I'm Long Range Planning Manager. And the purpose of this item is to consider approval of a resolution approving the parcel map, final maps, and various agreements to allow the Skyline Residential Project to move forward. On February 27, 2018, the City Council approved various entitlements to allow construction of the proposed Skyline Residential Project. The site is a long vacant eight-acre parcel owned by the San Mateo County Community College District. It's located at 3300 College Drive. It's on the east side of the Skyline College campus, and it's directly across from the Marisol Development. The project consists of a total of 70 residential dwelling units on two parcels. Summerhill Homes proposes to develop 40 single-family homes for individual sale, and the College District proposes to construct 30 multifamily units in two buildings to be used as faculty and staff housing. The project will create a new residential neighborhood with internal private streets, two neighborhood parks, landscaped common areas, and off-site fitness park and other improvements. And I will just now show you a few. So this is a summary of the that I just discussed. One thing I want to mention is that the project includes 11 affordable units, which is equal to 15% of the total of 70 units on the project. And all those units will be provided in the faculty and staff housing owned by the College Let me just show you just briefly the single-family project, which we'll call Skyline Ridge. And these are the examples of the four housing types, the four plan types. This is a 3D image of what the interior might look like or will look like. This is what the college ridge, which that's the name for the college apartments, will look like. This is a front facade. And this is a view from the interior street from where the single-family homes are located. So the project approval was subject to various conditions of approval, including preparation of a parcel map, a final map, and construction of private improvements. The private improvements provide new curb, gutter, sidewalk, driveway, streets, street lighting, signing and striping, landscaping, trees, street trees, irrigation, storm drainage systems, and treatment measures, sanitary sewer system, joint trench systems, and play structure improvements. So those are all the private improvements, which is most of the improvements. The public improvements include a new domestic stormwater system which will run along College Drive and College Road. The conditions of approval further required each developer to enter into various agreements with the city. And right now, I'll briefly go through each of the requested approvals. And there are 10 in total that are attached to your staff report. First is the parcel map. And what the parcel map will do is we'll subdivide the eight-acre parcel into a six-acre parcel to be purchased from the Community College District and developed by Summerhill Homes for the 40 single-family units. And in addition, a two-acre parcel that will be owned and developed by the College District. Separately after that, the final map will further subdivide the parcel owned by Summerhill, the six-acre parcel, to create 40 single-family lots, roadway parcels, common areas, and various easements. The parcel map and final map were reviewed by the city engineer and determined to be in compliance with the project conditions and technically correct. There are also two improvement agreements. These ensure that the public and private improvements will be constructed and approved by the city. The developers are required to complete all construction, provide bonds to guarantee completion of all work, and repair of any damage or defects for one year following the construction. The agreements hold the city harmless from any claims, and the developer pays the city costs for the review, approval, and inspection of the public and private improvements. There are also two maintenance agreements, one for the single-family and one for the multifamily project. They define the developer's responsibilities for long-term maintenance of all the private improvements to ensure that they will be maintained up to city standards. These include standards for private stormwater and wastewater facilities, landscaping, and irrigation. There are also two stormwater agreements, which define each developer's responsibilities for maintenance of stormwater treatment and control measures, including annual inspections and reports that are mandated by the state. Next, we have the Parkland Agreement. And the Parkland Agreement applies only to the multifamily parcel owned by the College District. And this provides for the dedication of property along the south side of the running track at the Skyline College Campus, and ensures construction, long-term maintenance, and public access to the off-site fitness park to be constructed per project conditions of approval. And you can see the location on the south side of the -- it's actually in the top end of the slide where the fitness track would be. And these are just examples of the fitness equipment. This will be publicly accessible to the public. And then finally, we have the Affordable Housing Agreement. And this restricts -- per the conditions of approval, the agreement restricts 11 units within the faculty and staff housing as affordable, with six units affordable to low-income households and five units affordable to moderate-income households for a period of 55 years. This satisfies the affordable housing obligation for the entire 70-unit residential project, and no affordable units are required to be built within the single-family project. That'll be entirely within the multifamily project. In addition, the district will pay an affordable housing impact fee of $320,000. The agreement also provides two approaches to project phasing. And the first assumes that both projects proceed on parallel tracks, that they go forward concurrently. And the second is if, for some unforeseen reason, there's a delay in construction of the multifamily project. So in the first case, the city will issue no more than 20 building permits for the single-family project until permits have been issued for at least six affordable units within the multifamily project. And the city will not approve final inspections or certificates of occupancy for more than 20 single-family units until all 11 affordable units have been completed and approved for occupancy. Staff expects this to be the likely scenario, since we've received the building applications for both projects, and they're currently under review. However, in the event that there is a delay in the multifamily project, we just wanted to be able to cover that, just in case that happens. Staff and the city attorney have worked with the developers to ensure that the single-family project can proceed. The agreement includes a provision that provides the city with the greatest assurance that the affordable housing are built, and provides the single-family developer with the assurance needed to obtain project financing, which is critical. If the multifamily project is delayed, the single-family developer may elect to pay a security deposit equal to the full impact fee for all 11 affordable units. And that fee is equal to approximately $3.5 million. And it is subject to the following time limits. So if the city collects the $3.5 million fees, building permits for both parcels must be issued by May of 2019, and construction must be completed within three years thereafter. And that three-year period is standard for building permits for larger projects. The entire deposit would be reimbursed upon completion of all 11 affordable units. If, for some reason, the multifamily project is not built at all within the time limits, the city would retain $2.8 million. And that represents the fee out for the single-family project. So if the single-family project came forward alone, that would be the amount of -- that would be the fee for that project. And the remaining money would be reimbursed to the College District because the project wasn't built. And the money would be placed into the city's Affordable Housing Fund to be used for an affordable housing project in some other location. So we don't expect the second scenario to occur, but it's something that we just felt that the agreement should account for, because you never know. So in conclusion, the project will create a new residential neighborhood of high architectural quality, and it provides family housing and affordable workforce housing for college faculty and staff. Also, very importantly, the project would help to address the region's housing crisis and help San Bruno to meet its regional housing needs obligation. It would fill in a gap between the campus and the surrounding residential neighborhoods to the east, and it would add an estimated $60 million in assessed value from property that's currently not on the tax rolls. The project would include new landscaping, parks, internal streets, various infrastructure, including storm drains, sanitary sewers, that would be privately owned and maintained with no cost to the city. It would install a new public water main, which the city may need for future connections between a pump station and water tank between the -- well, the pump station by Skyline and the water tank behind the college. So staff has reviewed the parcel map, final map, and all the agreements, and deemed them accurate and appropriate for execution. Accordingly, staff recommends that the City Council approve the parcel map, final map, and the agreements. That concludes my presentation, and I just want to mention that representatives of the College District and Summerhill are in the audience. And also, Will Anderson is here to answer any questions about improvement agreements and maintenance agreements.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Questions, comments from council?
So I went from being really, really excited when I first heard about this project. I thought it was great how to take a piece of property and fulfill a need for the staff that work there, or work within the district, and also provide that housing, much-needed housing. So I'm concerned about item three. And I'd like to hear more of why it seems like that affordable or the staff housing could not be built, and then the city would get $2.8 million to go build it somewhere else. And we're not really good at developing property. That's Skyline's and Summerhill's expertise. So I am hesitant in approving this for that. But I would like to hear the applicant explain why they think it could not be built. I mean, there's acts of God, but if you want to build something, this is kind of what the project was approved as, is building both of them. So that's the first part, and I guess I can wait to hear that, and then I can ask some other comments.
City Manager?
Sure. If the applicant would like to respond, I'll let the applicant go first.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council. My name is Mitch Bailey. I am the Chief of Staff for the Community College District and Councilmember Medina. We -- I think this is a belt-and-suspenders approach from the city's perspective to make sure that indeed we're fulfilling our objective. We have every intention, 110%, to make sure that we build those 30 units in as short a time as possible, because we have a waitlist of 257 people to get into those units. And actually, we probably won't stop with that one. You know, the district's goal is probably to have six total employee housing complexes, two on each of our campuses. So we'll be back to you at some other point in time to do another one, too. So we have, you know, more than full intention of fulfilling that obligation as quickly as possible. So I will refer back to staff on the belt-and-suspenders approach to make sure that they're keeping us honest, but as soon as we can get shovel in the ground, we're going to.
Thank you. City Manager?
Absolutely. And so I think that's a great terminology, as belt-and-suspenders approach. I think the other thing that council should know is that while we're approving them, they are together in this action tonight. All right. They are two totally separate projects, and so they will be two totally separate projects. And one of the reasons why we first entered into these discussions is because the financing for the single-family project is being put up by a separate financial entity. And that financial entity asks for assurance that if, for some reason, that the multifamily project did not continue, that their project would not be held up. And so while the College District does totally intend to do that, this belt-and-suspenders approach is really needed to, one, give the financial institution that's putting up the money for the multifamily unit confidence that there is a way for them to close out their project if everything they've done, their financing is in line, their contractors have performed, that we will issue the final permits and close that out. In addition, it gives the city confidence that should something happen, interest markets go down, the financing for the multifamily project is delayed, that we have assurances that we're holding significant resources that will, one, be an incentive for the College District to, as soon as feasibly possible, complete the multifamily project. But then in addition, should -- if that project go away, we have the $2.8 million, which reflects the fee out for the single-family portion that will go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we will do with those funds what typically happens, which is it, of course, does not construct a unit, which is why we prefer the units to be built on-site. But our policy does allow for the fee out of roughly $320,000 per unit. So that's how we got to that 2.8.
Does that answer that? Marty? Laura, you want to follow up? Hold on, please. Hold on. Marty, did you have some?
Yeah. It's interesting. I'm currently -- I work in Fremont, and I see a lot of development going on, and there's a big rush. And I'm just concerned that, yeah, okay. So you build the houses first, and then we have $2.8 million that go to our other $4 million approximately that we have in our fund, and, you know, we still don't have the housing. But I hear the reason, and I guess we can hear more later or now. I'm not sure.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I got an answer. I'm not exactly happy with it, but okay.
Okay. Well, please. Thank you.
I twisted my knee this weekend at Tahoe. I just wanted to say on the financing, there's no worry about our financing, because that is going to come at close of escrow from Summerhill. The money we get for the property will be spent on the construction of the development.
Okay. And also, I would like to reiterate that both building permit applications are in and are under review. And I know that the College District has the intention of issuing the RFP for the contractor coming when? It's next month or so? So I mean, it's moving along. It is moving along, and, you know, there's never been any question. This is just a -- something that you have to, you know, account for.
So what you're trying to do is, obviously, we can't predict the future.
Right.
And so this is something the staff has put in as a provision, should something happen, because if there's nothing there, then what do we have?
Right. And I'd also like to point out that one thing I didn't mention is that, you know, thinking of sort of every eventuality, there was one thought like, well, what happens if they pay the fee? Then the fee is paid, and they decide they don't want to build the affordable units.
Exactly.
Then what? Well, there's a provision in here that says if the multifamily -- or when the multifamily project is built, it will provide 11 affordable units according to the conditions of approval. So that's baked into the agreement as well.
Thank you. Marty?
It will be interesting having two contractors working side by side with their own objectives. I mean, I see it all the time, as infill housing is currently in Fremont and probably everywhere else, of trying to deal with two contractors. So that should be very interesting with the encroachment permits and who's doing what and who's responsible. Now you're going to have two different projects occurring, hopefully, at the same time, trying to get all their equipment and all their workers in. So I'm -- where are all these workers going to park when they're building these homes? Parking lot?
Are you prepared, Dan? Respond to that? Okay. Please.
Mayor, council. Again, so we have -- there's a parking lot adjacent to -- I don't know, Mark, if you could flip back to the original map, I can actually show you where the parking lot is.
I'll go to this one.
So right there. So if you look to the right side of the screen, you'll see sort of that middle section on the right side. There is a couple hundred spots in that area where we will dedicate that for the folks who are on-site working. And also, if I might add too as well, so your comment relating to, you know, having multiple contractors on-site certainly is a coordination exercise, but please be aware that Summerhill will be doing all of the horizontal constructions, so all of the infrastructure components will be -- for both parcels will be handled by Summerhill.
Okay. Great. How -- well, I'll just reel off a couple of questions, so I don't want you going up and down. And I know I don't want you getting up anymore because you twisted your knee. So how -- are there any labor agreements in place with this project? Is it a prevailing wage job? The off-site park improvements, where is that in the schedule? So it's conditional if the housing's completed, but there's a chance now, or there's an angle that perhaps the apartment housing will not be built, but we definitely are going to build, do the park improvements. So I'd like to know when that's scheduled, and I didn't see a date when that had to get completed. So I would prefer that happened earlier than three years from now is when, by May 9, May of 2021 is when it has to get completed?
That's for pulling building permits, yeah.
For pulling the building permits?
I mean, for issuing building permits, yeah.
Okay. I'm interested in that this project will have San Bruno fiber installed, and is it solely San Bruno fiber? Okay. The -- interested in hearing about a construction schedule of how -- when's it going to start based on getting your permit? How long you're anticipating of the construction is? And in one of the agreements, it lists $50,000 as a deposit on staff time. That's going to get eaten up really, really quick. So I think there is a provision for that, but it seems like that $50,000 for the size of a job would be pretty small. There's just a couple inspectors out there, and I'm guessing full-time to see this work. I did inspect the previous Summerhill job across the street, so I was there full-time, and there's a lot of neighbors that are going to be concerned about the traffic, about the noise, about the dust that gets blown around. So and the last part of it is the impact of this additional water and sewer for our system. Wouldn't this be more expensive to treat and pump this water than if it was -- clearly, I'm setting you up for this -- if it was a gravity system? So shouldn't this development be paying for that additional cost for those services that these homeowners will be impacting our system with the additional amount of pumping of the water and the sewage that will be required? And in the EIR, I believe there was mention of a report that was going to get done to quantify that amount. So I was wondering if that report's been done, and the result of that report would show that it would be obviously more costly to have water pumped up a hill to serve these new residents. And how does the city get hold on that to where we're taking on an additional cost for providing water to this development?
I know there was a lot of questions, and I was writing as fast as I could, but I think, and correct me, fibers, yes. It's not specified that it's only San Bruno cable. Prevailing wage is yes, and was put in the conditions of use at last time we sat here when I asked that question.
I didn't see anything in those agreements, so it could have been somewhere, but I didn't see it.
It was conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
But at least those two I can answer quickly to help. I know there were some others, construction schedule, impact, date. I think parking was answered, and then the $2.8 million, I believe. But if there's somebody who would like to address or?
So my name's Elaine Breeze. I'm with Summerhill. I'll hit the schedule question. So as indicated, we're in for building permits, but with the action this evening, our next -- our other pending permit is a grading permit. So our plan would be to actually start site work by the end of September, beginning of October. And that's a significant amount of work which will take us into spring of 2019 and set for model homes and apartments as well. So the first run will be the horizontal work, which will take us through, as I mentioned, the spring of 2019. But we're ready to go as soon as -- we're ready to go. And I think I'll defer to Public Works on the question regarding water and sewer, if they want to answer that, because that was the studies that was done by them. We are paying the fees for the water and sewer as it relates to the city.
Elaine, could you just indicate how long you think the construction of the single-family project will take?
After that, about a year and 15 months for the homes. We build model homes first, and these homes have never been built before, so we do the model homes. They get framed, we do frame walks, and then we start the remaining homes, and they are built in sequence as the market.
And Councilmember, I think one of the other questions that you had, too, related to the construction of the Parkland area.
Right.
You know, so we have a flexibility in working with that. Our goal is certainly to have that done well before the completion of our multifamily units are completed. And our goal is certainly to make sure that we're sort of, you know, on schedule and working in tandem with Summerhill on their project so that we can complete these things around the same time.
Does staff want to -- oh, staff is. Staff is. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable Mayor, members of council. My name's Will Anderson. Staff engineer is at Bruno Public Works. And in regards to the pumping, I'm assuming that you're speaking of the domestic water system. Yeah, as part of the plan development process, we did perform a hydraulic modeling analysis, and the results of that indicated the existing system can accommodate the additional demand from the project. And as far as the pumping, I guess the way the system works, the pump station itself actually sends water to the two water tanks on the west side of Skyline, and then from there, it's kind of gravity-fed out to the entire area. But another reason that pump station was constructed in the first place is But another reason that pump station was constructed in the first place is for emergency water supplies? So, yeah, so i, i, if the, the pressure gets too low, or there's insufficient flow, the pumps in the station kick in to supply that water, no matter where it is within that general quadrant.
That's a great answer. So the pump station is adequately sized. However, the question that I have is, is the additional cost of pumping that additional amount of water up to the tank from wherever the water first enters the pump station. It needs to get up there, okay? So it's an incremental cost, and, and I, and I believe this is, this is what I've been trying to explain to people when they ask, why is our water bills so high? Why is our sewer, sewer bill so high? Because we have the existing infrastructure that has to be replaced. And when you replace that infrastructure, it's very expensive. Those pump stations are four to five million dollars each. So everybody, even though you may live in a certain area that doesn't need a pump station, your, your, your water and your sewer operate via gravity. When you have to replace this aging infrastructure, and you're spending five million dollars a pump station, you, you start doing the math. We have, I believe we have eight or nine water pump stations, and, but the whole point, right? But the whole point is, exactly. The whole point is, that's an additional cost, that previously, we'd have to look back and change our whole costing model. But as people start coming into and start adding this additional cost to our current situation, we should recover that. There is certain costs associated with providing that additional water to new customers, and it should be, the city should make, should be made whole in, in that cost over the time that of, of your models that, that can run on how much water, additional water you're going to need every single day to make sure that that water capacity's there. So if, if that isn't really whole, then it should be made whole. There is a cost associated with that. The electricity, the, the maintenance, additional maintenance required to maintain those pumps, to replace those pumps, they have a certain cost.
And I guess, specific to this project, you know, we, they are installing the single-family, they're doing forty new services. I believe the apartments are installing two new water services. And the costs associated with that include both water capacity fees and sewer capacity fees. So in a way, they're kind of buying into the system with that.
And city manager?
In addition, our current process and, and policy is that the study is done. If the facilities can meet the need of the new development, there's not an additional impact fee, if you will. I think going forward, councilmember Medina, one of the things you're talking about is potentially an impact fee that could be assessed, and, and the city is current, currently has an impact fee analysis going on, and we can look at impact fees in the future, should the council so desire. But right now, with this particular development, we followed our current protocols, which is to do the study, and our current facilities can accommodate the, the usage. They will pay the connection fees and pay the ongoing fees like any other customer. But I think to address the philosophical point, you're, you're mentioning, I think the venue for that is really an impact fee at the time of construction, or at the time of approval.
Any other questions? See, that was a good answer.
Yeah.
Okay. Michael, you better. Okay, I think that that's it for questions. I'll bring it back to council for any action. It is a resolution which, if there isn't a, we would need a motion to adopt with a second, and we would do a roll call if so, desire of the council.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.